Okay. I have nine o'clock on July 25th. Ready to convene. We have a public hearing starting at nine, and so we are starting. Rule call.
Show.
Here.
De Cook?
Here. I'd like to make a motion, continue item number one, public hearing, and defer action on item number two, award of contracts until August 13th, 2019, at nine a.m. Additional information is needed before the board is able to make a decision on these items.
Second.
Show.
Aye.
De Cook?
Aye. Okay. So now we're moving on to item number three. Number three, and I see that Chairman McIntyre is here on item number three.
So we had two bids come in for the pavement markings for the year. The first bid was Iowa Plains Signing Incorporated out of Slater, Iowa, at ninety-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. And then the lowest apparent bidder was Quality Striping Incorporated out of DuPont, at sixty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-forty dollars. So we recommend approval of this contract to Quality Striping Incorporated. If there's any questions, I can take those. Sixty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-forty.
David, where's the location at?
All over the county, I couldn't quite say. We go out and drive all the county payments and make a determination of which lines are fading the most and go from there.
I would move item thirty, sixty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-forty.
I second.
Any discussion? Show.
Aye.
De Cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item number four, consider special claims as possible action.
This is for the purchase of two more belly-dumb trailers. We have one delivered, it's just the final two to get them in the door to speed up that process. So we would recommend approving this special plane to get those trailers in the door a little quicker for the start-haul on in.
And we know it's in nineteen point budget.
Yep.
And if second motion?
Second.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Show.
Aye.
De Cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Number five, discussion on secondary road facilities with fund. Plus what?
The last time we met about the secondary roads over at the Annex Building, the attorneys had brought up Code Section 331.402 that allows for a loan off of the general fund. Erin had requested that I gather some more information, put some numbers together before we come back to discuss it. I've asked Mark Corry to come as well, and D. Davidson are here. So the code section that allows for the loan agreement, this is just kind of my notes in summary form. It allows a loan agreement payable from the general basic fund as long as the principal and interest from the general fund on all loan agreements at the time of the authorization does not exceed ten percent of the last certified general fund budget. Ten percent of the general fund expenses for fiscal year '20, including transfers, would be just over a million dollars. Our existing annual debt that comes off of the general fund is fifty-four thousand dollars. So you have room with which to do that loan. It can be done on real property, including improvements, but there's a limit of five-hundred thousand dollars. If it exceeds five-hundred thousand dollars, then there's a process that the board would follow to issue the loan agreement. They must publish a notice of a discussion over hearing to enter into that loan agreement. At that hearing, you would just have a discussion about what you want to do, what the terms of the agreement are. That would be, follows the ten and twenty publication rule. We would have that public hearing where the board and the public can discuss the potential loan agreement. Thirty days later, you would set a second meeting, and that second meeting would then be when you would take action. If at any time during those thirty days between the first meeting and the second meeting, there could be a petition for election that can be filed of ten percent of the votes cast in the last presidential election, which would be around twenty-seven million people. But this code section specifically says not to exceed a thousand signatures. So they need a thousand signatures to petition. If a petition is filed, the board would by resolution submit to the voters or abandon the loan agreement at that second meeting. If no petition is filed, the board may enter into a loan agreement at the second meeting. So that's kind of a process that would have to be followed to go forward with doing a loan agreement off of the general fund this way. I did some estimates. Doug did go speak with some of the local banks. So on the estimate area, I've got kind of three columns here. So if the total project was four, five, or six million dollars, and we said we're going to take a million dollars from the secondary road fund, our estimated loan amount would be either the three, four, or five million. So if you have a four and a half, four and a half to five is your number. We did ten to fifteen. We're looking at, the estimates are between three-hundred thousand and six-hundred thousand, depending on what the board approves as an amount, which is in the range of that ten percent of the general fund requirement. So it meets that requirement, but it falls within there. If you go to the current general fund status, just to have a broad view of what the general fund, you've got, right now fiscal year end, our balance was four-point-six million. One-point-two of that is assigned already. So that leaves us with three-point-four is our fund balance in the general fund. That's thirty-two percent expenditure to fund balance ratio. Our general fund levy is already at its maximum, three-point-five. There are two different code sections that allow you to increase that levy. Iowa Code 331.425 is a special election to increase the levy. Iowa Code 331.426 would be claiming unusual circumstances to increase that levy, but I don't know that the board is interested in increasing the general basic levy. Our average tax dollar increase to the general basic due to value changes is right around three-hundred thousand each year. That's a five-year average, though, so sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. Our buyer average on the general fund for wage increases each year is around a hundred-and-eighty thousand. So of that three-hundred thousand new money, around a hundred-and-eighty of it goes to employee costs right off the bat. So issuing debt from the general fund will most likely require cuts to other general fund expenses to be able to make that loan payment. And then I've got a list of the allocations off of the general fund only by department for fiscal year '20, so you can see how those allocations are already spread out. So just giving you, this is an option that's the route you can take when you're looking at using the general fund to make the loan payment. I think you need to look at the bigger picture on everything that's coming out of the general fund as well when you're thinking about amounts and what the county can afford to do. The next page I have is some other options. You've got funding options that are not subject to a right of petition. You've got, but you've got to lower that cost down. Secondary road shop at around two-point-five million total project cost. You take one-point-five from the secondary road fund. You can do off of Code 331.402, that five-hundred-thousand-dollar limit, you can do that, there's no right of petition, you can just issue that debt. But then it also assumes sale of the existing facility will have funds to go towards the new shop as well. If you're able to sell it for five-hundred thousand. If you're not able to sell, you know, arbitrary, we throw in a number there, right? I don't. Additionally, you can do the secondary road shop, the secondary road fund balance. And then I did talk with Mark. There is some ability to use general and or rural fund balances if you're wanting to deplete those fund balances to put towards the project, as well as, again, it's assumed sale of the existing facility is going to have funds to go towards the project. Funding options that are not subject to right of petition, essential county purpose under 331.44116 is a capital project for the construction, reconstruction, improvement, repair, equipping of bridges, roads, culverts. If such capital project assists in economic development, which creates jobs and wealth. If such capital projects relate to damage caused by disaster. If such capital projects are designed to prevent or mitigate future disasters. The county would need to identify if the projects qualify for debt financing under this code. Then you could use debt financing on the road projects to allow fund balance growth to the secondary road fund facility project or pay proportions of it per year. Under essential county purpose, you have a funding option that is still subject to right of petition under the aiding, subsection fourteen, the aiding and the planning undertaking and carrying out of an urban renewal project under the authority of Chapter 403. We would identify how the secondary roads facility is essential to continue the economic growth within the county. But again, this one is also subject to right of petition. I believe those are, and of course, the referendum is another option for that. So those, which you knew about. I believe those are the options available to the board to fund the projects. And that's, I don't know anymore that I can present, but those are the options that the board has. Mark, did you have anything to?
I think you covered it very well. I'm happy to answer any fine-tuning questions that you can ask.
Maybe just real quickly, just a summary. So I understand that we can make a payment out of the general fund up to one million. Is that what I was supposed to figure? And we also can make a payment from the rural?
Using fund balance, you can use fund balance from the general and from the, and from the rural as well, Mark?
Yeah, I checked with both the State Auditor's Office and the Department of Management, and the guidance they both give and others is that because secondary roads are identified as appropriate uses for both of those funds, they would allow it for a building that's used to maintain those roads as well. Obviously, anything you take out of an existing levy just reduces the money, even for other things. The only one that doesn't do that is a debt service levy, where that's an additional levy on top of the existing debt. But then you're into usually a petition or an election.
So what we're really saying, it would have to come out of fund balance?
Fund balance or annual cash flow.
But I mean, I think they're saying the annual cash flow would...
Well, I mean, the board, I just want the board to recognize that if you go down that road, you will, at budget time, we will see that to make that loan payment, there will have to be cuts elsewhere.
So for example?
And we're back to fund balance. Isn't that correct?
Correct, yes. Or using on fund balance.
You keep this same sense of initial payments.
You know, and of course, you've got over ten to fifteen years. I mean, I don't know what the values on property would do over ten to fifteen years. You may have some good years, some bad years.
Just so that, you know, when I talk to the financial institutions, I'm thinking the rate that we got was because we weren't going more than ten years. I mean, the last time we went to get a rate was for the monitors or whatever it was for, it was in the twos, but that was three years. Now we've taken it to ten, which I thought was a minimum and maximum. I mean, to be honest, yeah.
Yeah, and one advantage you have is you have your financial advisor here today, and the four and a half, at least from my rookie eyes, looks a little high on a governmental bond for ten. I'd let you just...
I haven't seen feedback, four and a half percent over ten years?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be high.
It was four-forty-one, I think, but I mean...
Yeah. And the security would be?
The general fund.
Not debt service levy.
Not debt service levy.
Would we be able to, sorry.
No, I said the line.
Go ahead. Would we be able to make some of those initial payments with our fund balance, you know, the first however many years to a certain extent, and then that would help you guys that kind of budget for those, you know, next couple of years to figure out the general fund?
Well, it would kind of, you can, because like if you go to those estimates, I already have, my loan amount is considering a million already coming off the fund balance to go towards the project. So I don't think you have the fund balance to do that.
Could we do one initial payment to allow you a budget cycle to? So if we got like one-five, one-six million from the fund balance, and you can cover one initial payment, that would allow you some time to, you know, get you through one more budget cycle and reevaluate. Is that not a?
I mean, the payment has to come off of the general fund.
It does have to.
Yeah.
And we can't? Okay, okay.
The payment has to come off the general, the code section is purely, has to come off the general fund. So it has to be a general fund expense.
I do think that you could bait those payments from other lawful sources. So, and clearly, secondary roads is a lawful source of payment on that. So you could probably do some sort of arrangement like that without violating any code section.
I'm just trying to offer some flexibility, I guess.
And the reason I listed out all of the expenses off the general fund, so in fiscal year '20, we're transferring three-hundred thousand from the general fund to secondary roads. So do you stop transferring them off the general fund? Transferring that money because you're making a debt payment for the shop? So there's three-hundred thousand potentially that you could, if you, but again, that's less operating money for you then.
And it just depends on what type of a year we're going to have to.
Exactly.
And we're at the right beginning of the year, so...
So, yeah. So that's, I just want the board to be aware. I mean, there's just, there's just going to be moving parts here that you have to balance out if you go forward with doing it this way, recognizing that. And of course, over ten years or how many years, I mean, we don't know what values are going to do. There could be, you have a year where you have no value growth, where you're still needing a debt payment to make, or, you know, this general fund payment that needs to make. And then, and recognizing that there would have to be cuts to make that.
Is it worth noting that interest rates are probably going to generally climb from here, is that a fair statement?
It's going to be fair, isn't it?
I mean, in general with the market.
You mean if you weigh, weigh?
If you weigh the interest rates, but the market are going to keep climbing?
Perhaps.
Yeah.
I mean, there's obviously no crystal ball. Rates are extraordinarily low.
But there's a lot for closers, things in the marketplace.
There's a lot more room for rates to go up than to go down, but when they might go up, it's, you know, anybody's got it.
We've all been thinking that'll happen for the last thirty years.
Yeah.
I keep hearing it year after year.
With your permission, the one thing that I might elaborate on just a little bit, because it's a relatively newer code section, and it gives counties some, at least a piece of the same power that cities have had for as long as I've been doing this. Cities, when they build a major road or do a project, they have as an essential purpose borrowing a debt service, borrowing with the debt service levy to build roads. Counties have never had that authority. You've had to make do with basically the secondary road fund or anything you want to transfer out to general, like we've been talking about. About five years ago, don't hold me to that, but not in the too far distant past, the legislature said, "We will allow as an essential county purpose roads, bridges, and culverts projects if they assist in economic development and growth." And that is an essential purpose without referendum and so forth. It's, so what that did was, it said to counties, "You can't pay for every road project you do with a debt service levy the way a city could, but you can if it's assisting in economic development." And so there would probably be road segments within every county that are major pathways to commerce, that are major farm-to-market, major delivery of services to agricultural users. Perhaps they lead you to jobs at a factory, or they lead you to wind farms, or whatever. So I don't know that counties have really understood or appreciated the ability to use that code section that was given about, again, about around five years ago or so. And it does, it does allow you to tap a source that cities have had probably since they had the city code adopted. And so I just wanted to just elaborate a little on that because it comes the closest to the kind of power that a city would just immediately exercise if it had a project it needed to do.
Okay, Mark, on that, are you, do you want to talk more about item number six on our agenda?
I'm just in general talking about making funds available because when you talk about a limited fund, a fixed income fund, so to speak, called the secondary road fund, it, cash is cash. So if you have more room to pay for roads, bridges, and culverts, you create leftover cash for other projects that may not fit that definition. So it applies both to your current agenda item and perhaps down the road to your other one.
Concerning the interest rate, obviously, we'd have competitive bidding, you know. And if we didn't, it would be my, I'd rather have it be in the county financial institutions. But if we don't think the rate's fair, then we could expand it. So I think we'll find out what the rate is.
Sure.
I just went to them and asked them generally.
And that's kind of the approach that we're taking with the larger financings, is doing a negotiated sale. And that enables the underwriter to first offer bonds to local institutions within the county, which understands the preference of the county. And so we could do some sort of arrangement where we have an underwriter either find a bank to place a loan with or do some other sort of negotiated underwriting. But I would say the four and a half percent is probably high.
Got you.
It's a good worst-case scenario, though.
Yeah.
At this point.
At right now, yeah.
Mark, is there any way for the loan payment to come off the rural basic fund, like we were talking? If the loan payment came off the rural basic, I mean, it is not at its max.
Which loan?
The loan for secondary road shop under the...
You mean under the general fund?
Yeah, the 331.40.
Well, what you would have to do is, the rural basic is a general fund. So the overall general fund would go up if that were taken to a higher level. But it still would be the pledge of the entire general fund, not just some sliver of it.
But the payment could come off of?
The payment will just come out of the general fund. So, I mean, you will pledge it. Now, how you assemble the money to make that payment is up to your budgeting and your levying authority. So I think we're all saying the same thing, except you're drawing a closer link straight to a certain levy than I think the statute allows you to draw. In other words, if you raise the rural basic, that's going to make your general fund balance higher? Or the amount of money, won't it?
It'll make your rural basic fund higher.
It just makes your rural basic fund.
Okay, well, that's, if it's not in the general fund, then it's not.
Yeah, it's considered a separate, I mean, it's a separate levy fund.
Okay, you're right, because it's just for the rural services.
Right, and it's only on the rural.
So that's not the kind of loan that's allowable with the general.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I misunderstood.
What is our fund balance, what's our approximate fund balance in the rural basic fund today?
Oh, God, I didn't bring that one with you, I'm sorry.
I feel like it's north of the...
I can grab that real quick, I just...
It's on that June 30th.
I know, I just had June 30th, I just didn't memorize it.
And I suppose if you're using money from the general fund for things that could be covered by a rural basic, again, sort of in the same vein as we just talked about, switch the funding flow, which would free up money in the general fund, that's probably the only way you get to that approach.
Push more of the share of the rural. Some of it, and then that brings more money to transfer to secondary roads. Right, or rural?
Or decrease a debt with the secondary roads and transfer directly to the payment?
Okay.
Where are we putting shares?
I think you can transfer more of the share out of the general fund into rural. Because I don't think we'd do much in...
Because right now, the sheriff's budget's three-point-three last year.
It's like four-six.
Well, I think the four-six includes me. I think, doesn't it?
Well, my point is, if we can shift some of the shares, even if it's five-hundred thousand to rural basic, you can have...
Megan, you didn't get this part of the conversation.
I think one-point-six is the answer to the rural basic.
Thank you. And can any of that current fund balance be used as initial contributions that we're borrowing at Atlas?
You can, you can use some of that fund balance to fund the secondary roads. That's one of your options, to use those fund balances. Yes. Now, around five-hundred thousand of that fund balance is the local option sales tax that we received this year, that we received after. So you've got to drop that to about a million that you actually have available, because we'll need to use that as property tax.
Doug, do you want to mention to Megan kind of what your thought on that? I don't know if she heard me.
The sheriff.
About using some of the rural sheriff.
So if we move more of the sheriff from general to rural, does that free up more money to be transferred to secondary roads from the general?
Technically, it wouldn't be a transfer to secondary roads.
It'd be more a repayment on the...
It would pretty much, it would pretty much have to make a loan payment, but the transfer's already at its maximum. Yeah, that's, that's limited by statute.
And that's why we're quibbling on that. It's just that there is a, there's a transfer limit, but you can pay directly on the debt service.
But it frees up money, right?
It does free up.
It could free up a five-hundred thousand dollars for the...
Yeah. Yes, because the sheriff's general fund expenses are about three-point-six, and the rest of it comes off the supplement.
Except if I recall right, during budget season, we talked about, and we didn't, we didn't increase the rural basic a penny. I mean, we didn't increase rural basic at all.
We dropped it.
I don't think it, I didn't think it dropped out.
It's because of the local option sales tax.
Sure.
Was passed for one-hundred percent property tax.
We didn't mess with it this year at all because...
Correct, and this was the first year that we had the loss, and we hadn't even received any money at the time we did budgets, correct?
But it seems to me like logically, rural basic picking up a little bit bigger share of contribution towards debt repayment for a shop site, which effectively assesses with the rural roads, for example, you don't have the cities, right? That makes sense. My only concern with that is when we looked at, you know, theoretically increasing rural basic by a dime or fifteen cents, it just didn't, it didn't raise much money. I mean, I don't remember what it was, but it seemed to me like we were looking at a dime for ninety thousand dollars a year or something, something. It wasn't, it just wasn't, it wasn't nominal, but it wasn't some humongous pot of money. Yeah, as I had sort of anticipated.
Because it is only, the values are only part of the county. I mean, it's only your unincorporated areas. So your value is not the full county value that you're taxing at all. So yes, you have to raise more to gain as much funding, yes.
So realistically, in my mind, there might be three prongs of attack to do a repayment of three-hundred to five-hundred a year for the next ten or fifteen years, and some of that could be rural basic increase of a hundred or whatever. David's own annual budget, I think some of that needs to come out of that. But I want to find the most effective way to do it, so I'm going to still be open, open to whatever. But I, and I don't know as though the entire five or six that we quoted, I mean, that still seems awfully high. I would be more inclined at four, four and a half, and get a whole bunch of it done. I know that's not what you want to hear, but with the other things that are coming up, I think that maybe makes a little more sense. So if there's some aspects of it that can be pushed off a year or two or whatever, or internally done, I think that would make it...
Then you're still going to have to try to find a way to pay for it down the road. Whereas if you just do it...
Rip the Band-Aid off, I guess.
It's just managing future costs. We all understand that goods and services and labor's material just keep going up.
So Mark, what of the options presented, what, and considering that there's one, yeah, that still might be high, and you can't drain it, considering that maybe there's a five-hundred thousand dollar contribution from the rural basic fund that's currently available, what do you like for funding options? I want to do something with it, otherwise...
Sure.
Because this, this project, three years ago, or four years ago, was tremendous in less. It's not going to get cheaper.
Sorry. How many, is it one building or multiple buildings?
Multiple buildings.
Okay. And, and so one thing that you can keep in mind before I answer the direct question, sorry.
I get my...
But on the concept that we were on right before your question, it might be that you do stage one right now as a standalone project, the most crucial part, you know, start with that, get that done at the cost that's most favorable at this time. You do have the authority as an essential county purpose to do county buildings up to a certain dollar amount. And these would have, now, I'm not talking about splitting one project up and sort of wink, wink, nod, nod, we had, I'm talking about specifically separate projects that may or may not get built in future years. But if you started to build the complex now with your most crucial piece, and then took on perhaps other related projects on an annual basis at the will of the board of supervisors at the time, you may or may not be able to piece together eventually the kind of campus you want to have. And in some of those smaller pieces, they may be essential purposes where you could have a debt service levy, which would change the focus of the discussion quite a lot. And so I just wanted to throw that out there right now. And again, I'm not... And so, I, I just wanted to throw that out there right now, and again, I'm not suggesting that you arbitrarily or artificially break a project into pieces. That's illegal. I'm talking about specifically doing a project now, saying we may or may not do phase two, phase three, phase four. It'll be voted on by the current board at those times, and if they fit within the essential purposes, that gives another option to that board. If not, they can look at the kinds of discussions we're having right now. So, that's, that's the preemptory statements. Now, to your question, um, and, and I'm, and I'm gonna throw it over to, to you too, because it's, it, it's a multifaceted question where the financial is just as important as the legal. I, I think that you have hit the right buttons, you've got the ability to do a general fund loan. Um, you've got cash balances that we've cleared the deck on the use of with Department of Management and, and Auditor's Office, so you won't have problems there. Um, you've got a cash flow that's going to secondary roads now out of the general fund, which if you diverted some of it, would free up general funds to be used toward the payment. Some combination, and this is where I'm gonna yield the floor, some combination of those are all legal, and hitting the right balance is probably something you've gotta look at in terms of where's the pressure going to be in future budget years for the needs of the people? And then the economic realities, which is why I'm gonna now let you take over.
Right, uh, I apologize, I'm playing catch-up here a little bit on what some of the options are that we're looking at, but, um, I kinda echo Mark's sentiments about, you know, some of the, the general fund loan and some of these other options of paying, paying down some cash balances. Obviously, those are gonna have some future ramifications, and so typically those types of decisions, it, it doesn't sound to me like you're, you're doing anything foolish, or, you know, putting the accounting harms way financially. Um, but, that being said, there're gonna have to be some offsetting decisions in future budget years, and that's typically, I leave that to more of a, that's a political local preference type of thing. I don't think there are necessarily, I mean, to the extent that you can pay cash for things now, um, that's always gonna be preferable, because, um, you know, you're not paying interest cost on it. That being said, delaying projects into the future, you need to consider construction inflation costs as well as the, the cost of those projects today is not gonna be the cost of those projects in five years, so that's another unknown variable to, to consider as well.
I think another option available is, we could potentially phase out the cold storage building out of the, which is one of the three buildings. Uh, the rest are heated storage and mechanic base, wash base, that sort of thing. But the cold storage building alone at today's prices is around six hundred seventy thousand or so, so that could be one of those potential phases. Cause if we leave that out, we're still gonna have more than what we have now, and then it would just, building that possibly in the future would allow us to finally store just a little more equipment indoors. But that could be an, an option available to shave around six hundred seventy, seven hundred thousand off of it, right off the bat. And the other, the other thing we discussed was the salt shed as well, we can get by with a hoop building, which is far cheaper than a, a timber structure. That would be more ideal for the long term, but for the short term, other building is completely fine with us. Just some options out there that turn some of those costs down.
I, I have one other thought too, and, and I say this as much as a resident as legal counsel. Uh, there's, you know, people don't like to pay more tax, but I think when they understand what the choices are and what the needs are, they usually make pretty good decisions and, and do what they think is best for their, their county. So, one thing you could do, and, and you have the right people here, is you could prepare three parallel paths. I'm just, there's probably more than that, but, okay, if we just went out to a vote on GO and just did the whole thing now at today's rates, at the lowest borrowing cost possible with a debt service levy, here's what it would cost you in taxes. Option two, if we do everything now with the general fund and draw down these balances and, and shift the money around in some fashion like you've talked about, here's about what that's gonna cost you. Option three, this'll be the hardest one and put a dollar tag on, we do it in phases, we do a project now, we sit and wait and see, we do an estimated project here, we don't know what the cost will be, but we estimate it at such and such based on inflation rates. Um, we do a third project, here's what we think that could possibly be. And I think you lay those out for folks and let them see the choices, and it, it might be that people say, you know, we're, we're gonna end up doing these things anyway, let's get them as cheap as we can. I, I don't know, but I think that's an approach that is logical, and I also think it's one that sort of gives credence to the intelligence of the, of the voter, because they're gonna try to make a good decision if they have the facts.
Mark, I don't know that two and three do anything with property taxes, which is good things, by the way.
They may or may not, and they do in the sense that, they do in the sense that you've got limited dollars under general fund levy, and you've got needs that will only go up in cost, so, you know, it's, it's kinda like our old courthouse. You could defer maintenance on it and, and save money, but at the end of the day, it costs you more for doing that. And, and I'm not talking about you, I mean all of us.
Thank you.
I'm not talking about you guys at all. That was a thirty or forty year process, that was not any certain board.
I'm new to the county, Mark.
No, when I say you, I mean, I actually mean us, cause we all, we all let that happen over time. So, so, you know, again, I think, I think if you give people good choices, they'll probably make good decisions.
I, I will also interject with regards to, if, if you're pursuing financing for things, the cheapest way to do it is likely gonna be to hold a referendum, do everything now. Borrowing in, you know, general obligation bonds, if you're gonna borrow the money, doing it all at once is gonna be the lowest cost interest-wise. If you're gonna wind up cobbling things together over time, you know, there's likely gonna be more legal fees and advisory fees and things like that. And so, cobbling things together over time, this, with regards to financing, is going to be more expensive.
And, and by the way, another nuance to the approach that you just heard is, just because a debt service levy is pledged to repay, which means you're getting a little borrowing cost, doesn't mean you can't abate that levy with other funds like you've talked about here this morning. It doesn't mean you can't, uh, divert some of the secondary road money and use it to offset the debt service levy. It doesn't mean you can't take a fund balance and lower the amount you borrow at par to cut it off right at the beginning. You know, there, all the options you've talked about are available to abate the, the GO debt service levy, it's just that your borrowing costs go down, because the investor knows, at the end of the day, if these transfers happen or don't, I don't care, cause I've been pledging that service levy, and that's what I'm banking on.
So, we can maybe reconvene, it's maybe more of a work session type thing, to kind of.
Probably a lot of information to try and reach a decision in one day.
Yeah.
And I do think laying some of the options side by side, cost-wise, will be illuminating to all of you.
I'd like to get that together, Megan, Nathan, if you guys could.
Sure.
Yeah. Is it, for what it seems like, option one, when the voters decide as opposed to options two and three, which, um, you're taking services away from the public, but you're diverting it to a project that is needed?
I don't know if we're necessarily taking services away, I mean, I'd have to look at that, but, not the way I understand it. We're coming out of fund balances.
Well, I, I see it as diverting from other departments, from their fund balances as of now, so that we could pay a, a debt service levy. Moving on to, uh, item number six, discussion of bond measure to resurface twenty-six miles of paved highway with possible action.
So, I'm not, this is basically, uh, we've, we've discussed this a couple prior meetings. Um, the proposal from the secondary road department to overlay twenty-six miles of, uh, major county highways, major to us that collect a lot of traffic and connect to a lot of the, you know, existing communities we have. I can go through those again. The first project we had laid out to do an overlay on was County Highway R fifty-seven from Highway ninety-two north to G twenty-four. The second prod, part of this project we have outlined is from Milo to Lacona on County Highway S twenty-three. The third part would be Scotch Ridge Road from State Highway sixty-five into Carlisle. And then, uh, finally, the fourth project would be, uh, the New, New Virginia pavement, G seventy-six, going east to Highway sixty-nine. And the overall thought on this, we, we have pavement condition indexes on all our pavements. Um, we are trying to project more long-term, and, and that it would benefit us, and that we'd establish a better baseline to go off of. Um, a lot of the roads that need repaved or rehabilitated, that are under fifty-five mile per hour, uh, can get pushed off, because it's more of a safety concern to get a better driving condition on a fifty-five mile per hour road versus a twenty-five mile per hour road that might lead to a school, for instance. There's still a difference in safety when you're talking fifty-five to twenty-five miles per hour. So, it would just really set the county up, uh, for the future, so to speak, to get these, on our map, these roads are colored in red and, you know, orange, kind of fair to below our average, poor condition, and it would get them back into that a hundred percent rating over what we feel would be about a twenty-year design life, um, for this type of work.
And my idea, what was the total cost?
So, conservatively, the total cost we came up with is roughly three hundred thousand dollars per mile. Does not include subdrain. And the total cost for all four roadway segments is seven point seven five million, conservatively, with that three hundred thousand dollars per mile. And it's, it covers twenty-five point seven five miles, but for the sake of rounding up, we, twenty-six miles.
I see this as an opportunity to, um, let the voters have a, a real voice in it. To get the, an influx of those, those highways, I mean, S twenty-three's been terrible for, for a long time. It sort of piggybacks with the shop site and sort of some of the finagling that we, we sort of discussed earlier, or moving funds around, if, if the engineer is not spending as much time, uh, or increases the baseline on those roads, I would certainly expect and anticipate that some of the debt repayment should be a lot easier to be freed up from his budget, um, to do a good chunk of the approximate five hundred thousand dollar annual repayment for ten years or whatever. I mean, it, it seems like it kind of works hand and glove, uh, well together. That said, I have no idea, um, if the voters are, would approve that, um, or not. And so, I don't mind, and I think it's appropriate to give people, um, a voice. And so, I, I'm fine with it going to bond, I'm just, I'm not gonna hold my breath that it passes at probably, what, sixty percent? Is that what we need to pass this? So, I, I don't know if it passes or doesn't, but on the other hand, if, um, it sort of hits more or less four corners of the, of the county, and not so much in Indianola or Norwalk, but sort of roads that connect those two, or at least one road that connects those two. If it's not cost prohibitive to put it on, uh, the ballot for one of the city or local elections, if it's not gonna be a, a ton more for the auditor's office to do so, I have no problem giving the voters that, that voice an opportunity, and then the chips fall or they fall, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold my breath that, that we get eighty percent passage, but I think it also gives an opportunity for the board and the engineers' office to say, hey, look, you know, hey, you guys crushed this bond referendum, um, but you're here complaining about S twenty-three. I mean, how'd you vote on it? You voted no, there you go, there was your shot. Um, so I, I'm, I'm fine with it, as long as we can keep the cost, um, to a minimum for that referendum. I wanted to piggyback with one of the other elections, a local one, or, or whatever, if we can do that, let's do it.
And, and we all know, the two largest cities are Indianola and Norwalk, probably don't receive a lot of benefit, which makes it even tougher to get it passed, just my, my way of thinking.
Connection-wise between the towns, they would if they choose to take R fifty-seven into town, which probably means they had a specific purpose in Norwalk at that point, but. Regionally, regionally, probably not, but as far as connecting the communities and honestly, keeping the roads from turning to ground.
You know, I mean, just because of where it's located, but. What, what, tell me about, there was a cost that you said was not in the drainage or something?
Subdrain tiles.
That's important.
It can be, but it's hit or miss on our roads because of the way they were built originally. Uh, it's not like, on most, nowadays, we've tried to import soils and get the best fill material, back then, they.
Yeah.
dug up the ditches and put it on top, so, it does help, we just can't tell you where, because the soils are so varying that they're in different seams of underlying soils, so. It's just one of those extra sort of insurance policies on a road we provide, and we understand there's a lot of expansive plays in Warren County.
And since DA Davidson's he, is here, what is, I mean, I sort of recall thirty million dollars, what that looked like for the, for the average home, that, you know, when we went through that exercise on the, prior board went through that exercise last August to get the, the bond passed for the courthouse jail. I sort of remember about what thirty million dollars looked like on an average two hundred thousand dollar home. What is, what does eight million dollars look like for a two hundred thousand dollar assessed property in the county ballpark?
That's, that's, that's very complicated to ballpark, I'd have to run some numbers.
Do you remember what thirty was on the average home? What, what did we figure?
Eighty-seven cents per thousand.
Eighty-seven cents.
So, take the third, see, or take the fourth.
If it were a third, it'd be, what's eight divided by thirty? Twenty-seven percent? What's the twenty-six or what? Well, it's twenty-six five times eighty-seven five on last year's valuation. Per thousand.
Twenty-three twenty?
So, yeah, that's, it's about the costed per thousand, and I, I say put it up to the voters and let them make a choice, and if they overwhelmingly vote no, then you've got our answer.
And Doug, I'll backtrack a little, I'm not gonna say it won't have subdrain included, I, I just don't know the answer yet. Uh, being that these numbers are conservative, though, it, it could be likely that they could be included in the future if this moves forward.
Seven, huh, seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, and, and another point I wanna mention is it's not just the overlay, before we do any overlay, we have to do extensive, extensive patching on the road itself, so these costs include that. It's, it's not strictly just an asphalt, you know, high-performance overlay, we, there's a lot of miscellaneous appurtenances that go along with these projects, and you know, new shoulder rock, again, the full-depth patching, all those sort of things, improving people's driveways, uh, it's just part of the, part of what goes on with the project, but I just wanna be clear, it's not just an overlay, it's for the whole road.
So, my, my, my earlier point was, let's say that that twenty-three, and I know that fungible numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And that was, that's pretty ballpark, but just using last year's interest rate and last year's valuation, let's say it's twenty-seven instead of twenty-three, with a fifty percent rollback on a two hundred thousand dollar property, I mean, that's twenty-seven dollars a year, divided by twelve, and we're looking at two dollars and twenty-five cents a month. I mean, theoretically, people might go for it, or they might not, but it, I, I still think that, give them a shot, give them a voice.
Do you have an estimate of the savings for maintenance cost if those roads were redone?
That, there's, yeah, that's the, that's the other aspect, is that if this thing, if this thing wants, even.
It could be huge, um, it could be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, because it, and it depends on the year, this year we lucked out, but our pavements, we get the pavement slopes in the summer, for instance, on an asphalt road, we don't necessarily have to patch those, we can just mill them off or shave them off, or like the state does, potentially heat them off. So, now we're no longer digging down in the road to fix some of these patches, we're just shaving them right off of this asphalt surface. So, that's just one major cost savings, and just patching alone, we operate around seven hundred thousand a year for any miscellaneous patching items, so, that's a big pot of money there. It's, it's just gonna, and again, the twenty years, gonna extend the life of the payment over twenty years with proper preventative maintenance, but preventative maintenance is just crack sealing those roads, which is a very, very low cost compared to going in and full-depth patching everywhere.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there's a lot of work to be done prior to, what would be in November? Is that about as fast as we could get it on? I mean, I think you'd have to show people that paid for a dollar to five dollars a month to do this, which is what it's gonna cost for the life of the loan, here's, here's. month to do this, which is what it's going to cost for the life alone, here's, here's some cost savings that we think we're going to receive from it. But, again, I don't know where voters would be on it, no idea.
I think that leads to your point, is if this does pass, it will help us free up money for other projects, not necessarily just the shop site, but any projects in the county, so.
How much are soil samples to get done, to determine whether they need that stuff?
They can, they can bore about one every mile, but we're not going to get a good profile of it. I just, I don't think for this many miles it's worth the cost. We could do a couple, maybe investigatory type borings, but when you're trying to do them every five hundred or a thousand feet on a road, it's just going to add up to too much cost. But generally, with the overlay, we're using that existing concrete road as a base, so we're, we're assuming that if we do enough patching work on that road, that it should hold up fairly well.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is there savings in doing this all at once as opposed to...
Yes, that's, that's kind of why we presented all four at once, like we've kind of mentioned in this meeting, if we split it out, economies are scalable way down, you're going to be paying for that contractor to show it multiple times every time, and then the future costs keep going up, so we would recommend doing all these roads at once, and that's going to put the entire county transportation system in a better spot than what it is today.
Do you foresee one contractor doing all of this, or would it be broken up?
We, we would foresee one contractor doing this with one, probably one paving plant, which is a lot of that cost savings, because then they got to find, either use it or set up a paving plant for every separate project if they somehow get separated up.
Any further questions? Okay, moving on to item seven, which is discussion of bond underwriting or paid with possible action. Nathan?
All right. Thanks for having me here, again. I've got a memo, it looks like your books were distributed, the memo that I've written. Just wanted to share with you as your advisor, we obviously work with other county clients around the state. Carroll County, most recently, just last week, put out an RFP for bond underwriting services on their law enforcement center, and we, we sent it to three underwriting firms who we're familiar with, who do a lot of work in the state, and who we were confident would do a good job. The, the underwriting fees that we got back in that RFP process were substantially lower than what I've been talking with the county's existing underwriter about. I kind of negotiated him down from where they had underwritten the last financing for the county. The feedback that we got in Carroll County was even lower than that, and so I kind of just wanted to come to the board and, you know, get a feeling for where you're at as far as doing an actual RFP for selecting the underwriter. I know you've been working with Northland, you worked with them on the last transaction, and so, you know, I don't want to just be cavalier and blow up that relationship if that's something that the county values. I can also go back to Northland and say, here's what we got for Carroll County, you need to be closer to this, I can also do that. I guess I'm just looking for a little bit of feedback on if you want it to be more of a competitive process to drive fees down further, or how much you value the existing relationship with the underwriter that you've used in the past.
What's the difference between Carroll County's rate and what we were charged?
The...
You said it's significant, so what does it mean?
Yeah, in negotiating with Northland, their engagement letter states, and the fee that they worked for on the 2018 financing, I believe it was nine dollars and fifty cents per bond, or per thousand dollars of financing. In talking with them, I found some market comparable transactions, and we decided something close to like six dollars and fifty cents is probably going to make sense, especially in light of a twenty million dollar financing all at once. For Carroll County, there's a little bit smaller, right around the nine million dollar range, but we had underwriting fees between four dollars and twenty-five cents and six dollars a bond.
From Northland?
Northland was close, they were the highest proposed fee.
Say, say, what was the ranging?
Four dollars and twenty-five cents was on the low end, and almost six dollars was on the high end.
So...
And Northland was on the high end.
Six, five, seven, five.
They were five, I think five ninety-five is what they proposed, yeah.
That's a lot better than nine fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't speak for the other two, but I will say, yeah, let's make it as competitive as possible, and prior relationships are great, and if they want to be competitive, then they can get down to, apparently, if someone's willing to do it for four twenty-five on nine million, you'd think, you'd think they'd probably jump at the chance to do four twenty-five at twenty million.
Yeah, and that's a, yeah, that's a part of it.
So, let's find those people.
So, is that a motion?
That's a motion. No, I'm going to write it up.
May I?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, this question.
How easy is it to get out of the agreement more than the end with Northland? Would be my question.
Looking at the agreement, it says it's non-binding, and so, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but as best I can tell, it's non-binding, especially with regards to...
It's not something we're working for. It is, it specifically says that it's not binding, and that's sort of why we went down this road after the last financing with the RFPs for a financial advisor, and D. Davidson being selected, is to try and find these sorts of savings. You're only talking to one party, you never know what the rest of the world will do, and I'm just curious, not a public sale?
Correct, negotiated sale.
And what's your opinion on that?
On the negotiated sale?
Versus a public sale.
Carroll County specifically, they have a lot of financing institutions in the county, and they have a value in keeping the bonds local, and so our, our job as an advisor is to help set the pricing.
Right, but my only comment is for Warren County, I mean, it's the board's decision whether they are so interested in local that they issue the possibility of a public sale, so I just...
Yeah, the, the other option is to not do a negotiated sale, and you can do a competitive bond sale and open it up to everybody in the world to bid on the bonds. The bonds may wind up in New York City with a larger institution, the locals might have less of an opportunity to participate if that's the case, so that's, that's another option. When you have a competitive sale, the underwriters oftentimes taking risk, they might not, when they bid on the bonds, they don't necessarily have them sold to investors, and so that risk, there is sometimes some risk premium built into their fee. If you do a negotiated sale, you're working with the underwriter to get a market clearing price on the rates, and so the fees can, you have a little bit more control of the fees, I guess. So, yeah, it's completely the county's decision on that front.
Okay, we do have a motion?
And the second.
And further discussion? Shaw?
Aye.
DeCout?
Aye.
Mackinter?
Aye.
I can prepare a draft of the RFP and have that to the board in the next week or so, if you want to review it and give me any feedback, and I can distribute it to the underwriters, and we'll certainly...
Yeah, they can, they can bid on it, it's just we've got to be in the four or five dollar range of things.
Sure, yeah.
No further business, some of the points I wouldn't mention to you, yeah?
I, I have something, if you don't mind.
We don't have public comments.
Item one, you guys crossed over.
But still, we don't, right? You're doing...
You deferred item one to the...
Okay. I didn't hear the defer.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's going to what date?
August 13th.
August 13th. But you can come on an August 6 meeting, we do have public comments on August 6. Okay, yeah.
And that's at nine AM.
Okay, thank you.
Now, August 6 is nine thirty.
Public hearing is at nine AM.
August 13th.
The 6th is nine thirty.
And the 13th is...
Sid, nine o'clock.
We have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a question? Any further discussion? Shaw?
Aye.
DeCout?
Aye.
Mackinter?